Hi Laurie, it's Gary.
Hey Gary.
I got it to work the first time.
You did? I'm getting to be pros at this.
Yeah, right now Waterford uses Zoom than somebody else uses GoTo, so I'm getting to be an expert unfortunately.
You working from home?
Uh, not working from home, I am home, but no, still in the office. We can keep our distance up there at Public Works.
Are you still going in? Yeah.
Oh yeah, so the crews are still there.
Yeah, yes, too, we're still here.
Hi.
Hi.
Just wanted to make sure when you get to that list, let me know if there's anything more you need on that.
Oh, I'm probably about halfway through.
Oh, so it's working?
Yeah, are you, I was gonna ask you if you thought you'd have more than what you need, or it's hard to say right now.
There are some, but the list comes back from the quarantine list of whatever. I'm not gonna bother trying to get more because she's got the death logs on things that I don't, can't cross-reference.
Oh, okay, got it.
But it's not gonna be, I don't think.
Okay, that's okay. No, I wouldn't share, we're putting that, we're working on them, putting them in a drive and then when you're ready for all of them, it will happen with the team will be out on a public, which we don't like.
Oh, so I could just transfer them into something, oh, you don't want them out there?
They won't stay out there, so we're gonna, we're gonna ask you, unless there's a way, unless there's another way we can get it on your, a drive that's just for you.
I've got my M, my own drive.
Right, but like if I put it on the P drive, if you could like stick it in your drive?
Oh, I can do that.
And then I'll delete it from the P.
When you get to that point, let me know a little bit for it.
Yeah, okay, sounds good, yeah, but otherwise, yeah, we're, we're working on it, so keep us updated, maybe get more or whatever.
Alright, thanks.
Hold on up so I can read it, no, I'm kidding. Yeah, okay. I lost, I can't hear you. Gary, I can't hear you. Nope, you have no voice.
There we go.
There you go.
To prove I'm here, Mr. E.
Wayne was here, but I don't know, Wayne, you there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay. Thank God I don't have a camera. Oh, Wayne, I can't hear you.
No, I'm here, I just muted it for a second.
Oh, you muted it, okay, no problem.
I need to yell at my grandkids to make sure they stay quiet.
I would think you'd say something. You say something to this.
I don't find.
Hi guys, this is Kate.
Hi.
Hi Kate.
Pete McIntyre.
Steve Justkowitz on the line.
Mike Brennan is on line.
Hi Steve. Steve McIntyre.
Steven June is on line.
You're not on line.
Not on line what?
We just said, they're just saying who's on line.
Oh, who's on line?
We have Kate and Gary also.
No. It's saying, you're not on line, says.
Hey Pete, we can hear you, I just want to mute your end, but we can hear you and we can hear Gal.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, I'm okay then?
Yep, we got you.
You're good.
Okay, Kate.
Kate, you said you were on line? Kate?
Pete, yes.
Kate's there, okay.
Okay, okay.
Okay, it's 5:00 PM, so I guess it's time to get this virtual meeting started, for WebEx meeting. I'm only on audio, so any of you that are on the WebEx site, you're not gonna get to see my smiley face. This is Steve Justkowitz, I'm the chairman of the Permanent Municipal Buildings Committee for the town of Ledyard. Today is the 6th of April 2020, it's 5:00 PM, and our remote meeting begins now. So we're gonna begin by calling this meeting to order, and we'll begin with a roll call. I ask that you state your full name and the organization that you represent, or that you're a member of the PMBC. Steve Justkowitz, chairman.
Pete McIntyre, uh, vice chair of committee.
Steven June, Silver Petraselli.
Mike Brennan.
Wayne Donaldson, Ledyard Public Schools.
Kate DePalma Herb, Ledyard Board of Education, PMBC member.
Okay, in case some of you think that we might have heard you, it might not have. So far I've heard from Pete McIntyre, Gary Schneider, Steve June, Wayne Donaldson, and Kate DePalma Herb. So anyone else who's on line, please chime in.
Mike Brennan, ONG. Did you copy that, Steve?
Gotcha, Mike. Thank you.
That's her with ONG, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Dan. Alright, I'm looking for, I know Bob indicated he was not gonna be able to make this meeting in the email, hoping that Jerry Tominski is on line and/or, or Steve Shuttleworth.
I don't see either one.
Alright, we do not have a quorum, we have one, two, actually we have a quorum, we have four, yeah, we have a quorum, we have myself, yeah, we have four. So we've got Pete, Kate, Gary, and myself, so we do have a quorum. Excellent. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on with the meeting.
Oh, wait a minute, is that, somebody else has talked in?
Hi, this is. Steve Shuttleworth.
Okay, excellent, Steve.
Hold on, this is Jerry Tominski, am I in?
Oh yeah. In fact, we have a super, we have a super quorum now, we got six out of seven, we're in good shape. Alright, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the business of the meeting. The first item on the minutes is approval. Whoever's not talking on the other end, just mute your line if you would. Our site that we have is the approval of the minutes from both the 2 March and 30 March meeting minutes. If you're on the town website, you'll be able to click on those. Just keep in mind that special meetings are treated differently than regular meetings, so you have to jump over, either use the calendar function, or get into the special meetings. But those minutes are available and they've been distributed, so with that, I will entertain motions to approve the minutes for both 2 March and 30 March.
Motion to approve.
Alright, just one quick thing for those of you on these meetings, I need you to state your name when we're voting and/or you make a motion, so please state your name in the motion.
Steve Shuttleworth, motion to accept the meetings.
Okay, the motion's been made, do I hear a second?
Kate DePalma Herb, second.
Alright, I think Kate was the first to chime in, like Jeopardy, so with that, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying your name and eye. Steve Justkowitz, eye.
Steve Shuttleworth, eye.
Jerry Tominski, eye.
Kate DePalma Herb, eye.
Steve Shuttleworth, eye.
Jerry Schneider, eye.
Okay, that should be it. Steve, Justkowitz, are you there?
I'm here, okay, I'm sorry, I hit my mute button, more than I thought. Our next item on the agenda is citizens, so the ayes have it, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments, so if there are any citizens that are on line, I ask you to please state your name and your address if you wish to address the committee. If not, I'll give you about 20 seconds here to get started, if not, we'll move on. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move on. I have no informational items. Lisa, do you have any to pass to us?
No, nothing.
Okay, in this moment where we have some people that have been recently reappointed, but Town Hall is closed, I presume that there is no way to be sworn in right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so those of you, I think Gary, you and I are the only ones that have been recently reappointed, that need to get into Town Hall, we'll wait for Town Hall to open. Alright, moving on to our agenda type, at our last meeting, somebody's got an open mic on somewhere, they get a lot of feedback. We had a, at our last meeting, we did have mainly just to pay some bills, we didn't get a chance to talk about what's going on in the schools. So before we do change orders and before we pay for any, pay any bills, what I'd like to do is to go ahead and let Wayne Donaldson talk about the status of the buildings right now, and then let ONG and Silver Petraselli chime in in that order, please. So go ahead, Wayne, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll start with Gallup Hill. We've been getting some work done, the electrician was in, moved an outlet in the main hallway for the video screen that was moved by the principal to the other side of a doorway, so he got that outlet in, so we don't have an extension cord going through the ceiling any longer. He hooked up the desk in the, uh, main office for the secretaries, and now that desk has power, moved the panic buttons out of the way for the cabinetry to go in for the desks for the principal and vice principal. They did come in and started stripping off the stairway treads. Unfortunately, they brought the wrong treads, Nora shipped the wrong ones, so we're able to fix that before they started to install them. They did not have the visual strip on them, or handicap people coming down the stairs, they were just one solid color. So Nora acknowledged that it was their error, and is putting a priority in getting them out, and maybe ONG has some more update on that. The last I heard was somewhere between a week to two weeks, we should have them in, and it's been close to a week now. So sometime this week or next, they should be back in, we should be able to get them installed. With the elevator at Gallup Hill, whenever they do a test on the sprinkler system, it goes into fire mode and the fire department has to come out and reset it. So the fire marshal's gonna go up next time they do a test on the sprinklers, and try and figure out what's going on there. We're not sure if it's in the programming, or the contractor doing the inspection of the sprinklers isn't setting something correctly. We have a setting meeting. I believe it's Thursday, Dan can correct me on that, it may be tomorrow, with the landscape contractor to go over both buildings, to finish up landscaping. We're still having a problem, they did come out and correct the parking lot lighting, the exterior lighting was on 24/7 at Gallup Hill. They did come out and correct it about a month ago, but again, now it's back on being on 24/7, so. For that, is going to, Ferguson out there to take a look at it. Mike came up with a new bracket for the TVs that we can use them to slide up and down. I told him he can obtain them, because Custom Electric is giving a problem right now with their staff being off, being furloughed because of Corona, not being able to get in to do any of that work. As, turn around and get ahold of, you can obtain the brackets, that I would have my staff start changing them, move that project along. Still waiting for some updates on the petition for the restroom, a couple other things that Mike's working on, but things are moving. I mean, we're making progress, which is good, which we hadn't seen for a long time. The middle school, they were out, they did re-weld the doors in the stairway, the hinges and stuff, so that's all set. We still have to do touch-up paint, but I told Mike if he gets me the paint codes, I'll get that, because we have some other touch-up to do on walls and stuff, just from the normal use by the kids, that we would turn around and take care of that. Also said that he was out and looked at the magic hole open for the stairwells and all, and that we would take care of painting of the wire mold and stuff like that also. Supposedly, they were out Saturday and did a lot of the site work at the middle school. They were supposed to be out today to do planting of trees and stuff, I did not get a chance to get out there and take a look at it, but we'll be doing that tomorrow, or whenever we go out with Dan to look at the rest of the exterior grounds and stuff. That's about all I have.
Okay, I appreciate that, Wayne. A couple comments on the elevators doing that. I presume that when the sprinklers go off for real and they trip the fire system, the elevator should then go into that kind of a mode, so be treased to see. And then the question is, let's verify that the, do we have the same problem at the middle school, or just Gallup? And is it only one elevator?
Just Gallup. Just Gallup. It's both elevators. They just go to a given floor, depending on what floor it's called to, and they open up and they're in fire mode and the fire department has to come out with their key and reset them.
Yeah, that sounds to me. Alright, so we'll get those folks involved in that and figure out where that needs to go. The other, on the north stairtreads, when you sent me that note, we just cannot win on stairtreads, but we'll see how things move in that direction. I presume that there are no restrictions on work being done in the building. Is your janitorial staff still working?
My janitorial staff, my maintenance staff is working. So we're going full blast, and they have 100%, 24/7 access to the buildings whenever they want them.
Alright, I'm presuming we've seen a reduction of a number of complaints about temperatures in classrooms?
Yeah, because there's nobody in them.
Well, the good news is that this allows you to do some testing with doors, open doors closed, and see if that has any impact, and I would encourage you to do that. I think we can do some of that testing, and we'll approve some things that that's not part of the problem perhaps.
Yeah, Steve June was checking with the engineers, and maybe he can update us on where that stands on the last meeting we had with ONG and all. That was to take back to the engineers to try and figure out what the issues are in both buildings. Much less issues at the middle school. It's a noise issue on the third floor, off the units only, the other two are nice and quiet. And it is, the guidance office has a couple of small offices in there, that there's a temp issue on, so the main problem is Gallup Hill right now.
Roger that. Okay, alright, with that, moving on, I think we'll let the architects talk next. Steve June, why don't you chime in, anything that you guys are working on, or anything you want to update us on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, my amount of hours are probably about two hours, maybe three, mine for both jobs. Working on any proposal requests that might come up. We're reviewing of the change orders that are coming from Mike. I've been in contact, talking back to Wayne and Mike, in regards to the mechanical issues that Wayne just mentioned. The Ledyard Middle School, that's left up in the hands of Mike Brennan. Last thing, we knew that they were going to have someone come out and switch out that noisy diffuser into, I believe it was two panels, or enlarge the panel. I believe Mike would be able to answer status of that. And then in regards to Gallup Hill, we have the air balancer that needs to come out. We're just waiting for the air balancer from Mike to come out for that, check things, because our technical engineer is looking for a report. Other than that, I'm gonna work, just answering questions and helping out as I can.
Okay, understand all, Steve, and appreciate that. We'll go ahead now and go over to ONG. We're gonna do the change order separate, guys, so just as a couple of data points for the, for the committee, and Mike, I'll go ahead and talk about a couple of things, and Dan, before we get into the, in any further discussion, one of the things that, I had some communications with, with Mike Brennan, to talk extensively about the items that are still out there on the street that, that we're still working. I'm gonna have a discussion as, before we start paying some bills with the committee about our, our interest costs and things like that. I do want to let the committee know that I did get verification back from Silver Petraselli, just to verify what we thought was correct, and that is that the ban interest, the short-term borrowing interest, and the cost for doing bonding, all that stuff wrapped up together is not reimbursable by the state. That's really, really important for us, because as, I'm gonna give you some numbers that Marsha Hancock gave me right after our last meeting as to her anticipated costs as we close out the project. She's got some assumptions that we're able to get this thing all closed out, and fully closed out, and the state has paid us all of our money by June of 2021, which, you know, she thinks that, you know, if we get this thing out of the way, you close things out, we give the state six months, that type of thing, what it's gonna cost, and we'll talk some more about that. But I asked Mike Brennan to give me a list of items that, that we were still playing with, with respect to be able to close out our budget and things like that. So there were, there was a stack of things that Mike provided. In fact, I'm asking ONG to provide us with an updated financial for our next meeting, our monthly, our cost control reports. But I do want to just state kind of quickly, the items that were still being tracked, some of those we're gonna talk about here tonight, that we were able to roll into our estimated costs. So I'm gonna read some items to the committee, other than things that were already in the cost control. Other than things that were already in the cost control report as change orders that had already been processed or that we were already carrying line items for. In other words, they were already in the, if you look at those reports, there was a column in there that talked about projected costs. Where we already had a dollar figure in the, in the change order for that. But the items that were not included in that, I just want to run through those really quick. The first two, we were carrying some money for it, but we bumped up that amount since then. That was to reposition. Now, the person to talk about is Gallup Hill. Repositioning the smart boards at Gallup Hill. We had a $22,000 estimate there. That got a little bit higher. The safe room, we were only carrying about $19,000 for that. The actual cost was going to be about 64,000. The tread changes, we were going to see about a $2,500 upcharge for the material, no additional labor. The paving near the storage shed outside was about $20,000. Handicap doors, Mike's original estimate was 17,500. That's actually going to be higher than that. We'll talk about that tonight, but it, that's a handicap door access. You push the button, the doors open. Adjusting door swings that needed to be adjusted where the plan did not call for the door swings that we wanted afterwards, $2,500 there. Some additional security enhancements, approximately $9,500. The relocating of the lockdown buttons, I think we talked about that's already been done. To a better location, that was $1,400. Urinal screens in the bathrooms, so we have some more privacy, $1,000. And then there was also the vermiculite resolution. We're carrying $25,000 for those particular items to be able to deal with those. So that was inside Gallup Hill. In addition to that, we also had changes that we were tracking at the Ledyard Middle School. And in addition to what was already in the cost control report. We're also adding again handicap doors carrying 17,5, but we have a little bit of a better number now. Ladder access that needs to still be installed at 5,000. Snow guards for the roof, even though they put on that solar system, there's still enough roof material there where some snow could come down on the benches that are near the canopy. Snow guards is 7,500. Another $2,500 there for the upcharge on the stair treads. We've got $20,000 for potential locker room changes. We've got a dealing with the loading dock, there's a $1,500 charge there for fixing the ceiling. It was not designed with a proper ceiling there for that. Shades lighting in the neighborhood of two different areas for a total of $36,000 for the auditorium. Piano outlets at $7,000. I think that's going to come in lower. And then we threw some contingencies on both schools, 10% of all those changes. To come out with a dollar figure that I could provide to Marsha Hancock to give her a better estimate of what it was going to cost to close out these particular projects. I was able to go back through all of our soft costs and do that analysis. Our soft costs were actually in most cases a little less than we thought they were going to be. Because we spent a lot less money on utilities and a lot less money on you know, originally we were going to hire someone to, at the time, you know, Sam Co-Patrick had an assistant, we were going to pay for it for a whole nother year. We didn't pay for that. I guess that's where the money went to buy that snow removal equipment and now it doesn't snow. But there was quite a few areas where we were able to save some money in the soft costs. But then we had higher soft costs in things like architectural fees because we had some redesign work. And you know, some other things along the way. So the big thing I wanted everybody to understand is that all the items I just talked about are the things that ONG is tracking on the schools. Some of those we're going to see change orders for tonight. Some of those, they're still being worked out. But that was everything that was on the on the radar as of a week ago that we dealt with either at our last meeting or we're going to be dealing with in the next couple of meetings. So when we bring those items into the project and we close them out. You know, our goal here is to, we're not adding anything else to the buildings at this point. We find little nickel and dime things that we don't like and we want them done differently, they will have to be handled outside the project. Because here's the thing that's important for the committee to understand. The longer we take to close out the project, the longer it is before we can say we're done, put our pencils down, file to the state and say we're done with all our change orders. And let the clock start for our audit and close out of the project. We need to close out the project to get that state money back. If you think about it here, the state reimbursement on this particular project is going to be in the neighborhood of probably about 37 to 38 million dollars. The state holds 11% of that back. So we're talking about, you know, we're really talking about three and a half million to four million dollars that we're going to have to finance until the state gives us our final amount of money. And we'll nickel and dime back and forth with the state on change orders and things as to what they'll pay and what they won't. But the fact of the matter is, thank God, the interest rates are low because we're going to carry that. And we did not plan on carrying that money in this project when we started the project. Because the state changed the rules after we started the project. It used to be a 5% holdback and now it's an 11% holdback. So you throw those couple of things together and we have additional bonding and short-term borrowing costs that we'll talk about here in a few minutes. But now that I've talked about all the things that ONG is working and Silver Petrocelli is working on closing out the change orders. I just want to make sure everybody understands that we are done adding anything to the projects. I also, by the way, I did, something I did not mention. We threw in another, I believe it was and I don't have that number in front of me. I think it was another, any of the numbers I gave Marsha, another $50,000, I believe it was for the purposes of let me just go back, I did find my numbers. It was another $50,000 on top of that with a 10% contingency. We're addressing some of the changes that may have to occur in Gallup Hill School to deal with the HVAC. Whether we have to add some, you know, some space heaters, you know, properly electric space heaters or something. Or reheaters or something in those lines to be able to deal with the problems we were having there. So just wanted to cover all the things that we were tracking in one way or another on those schools. And like I said, at this point, nothing else is being added without a full committee vote under any circumstances on these projects. We've got a lot of outstanding stuff that still needs to be cleared up. That's being tracked. That's already in the budget, but we're not adding anything else. So with that, I want to turn over to Mike Brennan and Dan to talk about status and work and then we'll get into some change orders. That's Mike Brennan and Dan Hessler.
Mike, you, are you online?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute myself. Sorry about that. Steve, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of items that you were just speaking of. I sent you that email with regards to the the state audit and the fact that the short-term interest was unreimbursable. And I just wanted to make sure that you got that email with regards to the ability of this, of Ledyard not being able to go out and get a private audit, that they changed that. The state changed that as well. So you're, unfortunately, Ledyard and every other town in Connecticut is left up to being audited by the state of Connecticut and however long that's going to take, it's going to take. So but I just wanted to make sure you got that email that I did send you.
So in that case, 50% of the project cost, Mike, will be for borrowing against the state's and just I want to confirm something on this here. This is an item that I'm going to just let everybody know and bring to the attention of the chairman of the town council, to the superintendent of schools, also to the mayor, to be able to put pressure on the state. Because they changed this, you know, the cost to go to 11% was substantial. They were not part of our EDO 49 and we should be grandfathered at least at the 5% because our EDO 49 was approved before the state changed this particular situation. So I did get that. I also got confirmation from Steve June. Silver Petrocelli gave me the same answer you did, Mike, with respect to what's what's going to be allowed and what's not. And the other thing is we need to do our own internal audit to get a better feel for what our actual percentage of the project is going to be reimbursed. So that we can bond, you know, we can bond those financing costs, but we just can't bond anything more than that. So I'm going to turn back over to you, Mike.
Steve, I, on that same note, I do know that other, other towns have gone to their state legislators and got quote unquote, special legislation. They can't undo it, but you know, they slip into certain bills there, certain, certain legislation that gets you back to where you get to. So that's a road that your legislators also need to look at and take when, when, when you do get there, so to speak. So
Roger that. Appreciate it.
So to follow up with a couple of items, as Wayne said, you know, we're working a lot and trying to get all these, these changes buttoned up, get them quoted, get them to you while the schools are still out. I know I sent a slew of them to you today and we could talk about that later on. But along the lines of getting things done in the schools, I'm getting people back punch list. The exterior punch list for both schools is ongoing and we're, we're trying to have a walkthrough with the BCS this week. Wednesday, on the 8th was scheduled though. They haven't confirmed it yet. Things have gone sort of amiss with this COVID-19 thing and trying to get people to respond, but nonetheless, we're still banging on doors. What else is going on? Just looking at my list here. I do, as Steve said, I'm trying to get the balancer back because the mechanical engineer wanted to confirm reconfirm, if you will, some numbers on those problematic rooms we have at Gallup Hill. So I'm working on trying to get him back there. Painter's been back, painter's been back at LMS and a couple of other trades have been back there as well. Punch list. So things are coming off the punch list, the quotes are coming in. So we're just trying to wrap this thing up because I, as you said, Steve, the longer this goes on, the longer the project stays open and we can't get to the final number. So so that's, that's kind of where we are.
Okay, Dan, do you want to add anything?
Just a couple of things on, we're on the list. The landscape review, as Mike mentioned, was scheduled for Wednesday. There is more work to be done over at Gallup Hill. So Gerber got back to me and said they wouldn't be ready till next week. There's a possibility, Wayne, that we won't be looking on Wednesday, that that would be pushed off.
That's fine. Whatever the schedule is, we'll work with.
An email is still great. The best way to reach you.
Yeah, that's fine. You can email, text or call me. Whatever works for you is fine. I'm checking all more constantly.
Other than that, on the financial side, what I'm doing is bringing that back, the allowances that that were in the trade contracts back off their contract in order to close them out and give you a better understanding of where you are. Yield the floor back to Mike.
All right, Mike, do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't. As I said, yeah, pretty much what I said before is pretty much an overview, you know, 30,000 foot look at the projects right now.
Okay, with that, go ahead.
Steve? I'm clear.
This is Jerry Tominski. I, Wendy, I guess this is for you too, Mike. When we do the we do the final cost, the projections of where we think we're going to be. Are we accounting in those final costs? What the interest is going to be on the holdback? If the state delays for two or three years to finalize the money we get and release that holdback. That could be a substantial sum of money over time.
Actually, that's probably not a ONG question or a Silver Petrocelli question, other than what the state policy is. But I will tell you, Jerry, that I had a discussion with Marsha Hancock. And I passed Marsha updated projections for where I thought the project was going to end because she was getting ready to bond some additional money and make some payments on some money that we'd already borrowed. The, and incidentally, she sent me an updated cash flow forecast. Now, I will tell you this much, you know, we, looking at those two particular projects and where we were on those projects. You know, we, we were actually looking at just to let you know, as everyone online here is that when we started the project, the town finance director gave us a dollar figure of $265,000 per project for short-term borrowing. And we carried those numbers and as we approved things and payments along the way, we had no update from her on those because they're not, we don't approve those payments. They just happened in the background. And in this particular case, just so that you know. That was, so that was about $530,000 was our projection going into the project. And this for a variety of reasons on how fast the state reimbursed. We had the one-year delay, other things that occurred. We have to date already paid 1.18 million dollars in bond and debt costs up to date. Now, some of that is for going out and getting bonds. We have about $21 million in bonds right now. Our town portion of this whole project is expected to be under 26 million. Although depending on how the state views certain change orders, we may see a little bit more there. But the total estimate that she gave me recently, which was assuming that we do not get the final bonding until June of 2021. She estimated that the total costs will be $2,009,000. So that's you know, just over $2 million in total costs. So if you look at where we were in the project. Where the original amount was about $500,000 and now we're talking over 2 million. The roughly $1.8 million that we were still quote under on the project. One, you know, the vast majority of all the money that we didn't spend will go toward bonding costs.
Yeah.
Now, your question, Jerry, is what does the town do for all of that other money? Well
No, no, no. My, my, no, no, no. My question is you just said it. The bond cost is about $2 million. And she's assuming this will end and we will get all of our money on the 2021, a year from now. And what I'm hearing along the line is this could take two or three years for the state to finalize its audit on this issue. And that interest on the holdback for us continues for us.
That's correct. And when we wind up bond, yep. Jerry, you are correct.
So I'm just curious where, where, what, how are we or how is the town going to account for the possibility of this running out for a couple of years? We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That's correct. Now, just to let you know, when the town approved the budget, the town approved at referendum, I believe the correct number is 65,835,000. And of that, there was three components to that part of the, of the referendum. There was, there was 35,652, 35 million and 35.6 million for the middle school. 28.6 million for the Gallup Hill School. And if you all recall, they were, the numbers were backwards in the referendum, but it, the way the referendum was written, it didn't matter. The town council could fix it. But then there was also about 1.4 million dollars in money for demolition of the the Ledger Center School. However, the way the referendum was written was the entire amount of the project, the 65.8 million. The town council was able to redirect funds inside that referendum as needed across the projects. So we would have ran way over for some reason because when we, you know, we started doing the project and something happened where the cost got really high. So money that was that was quote earmarked, for lack of a better term, for the Ledyard Center School could have been used for LMS or for the Gallup Hill School. So there's still, even with all the projections of over $2 million in short-term borrowing and debt costs. There's still about 1.4 million dollars, even with all the stuff we talked about that's still not in the final numbers. Available to the town to help deal with that debt.
I'm just, no, 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 I, I, I understand that, Steve. I just I guess my question is, could we get our politicians to light a fire underneath the state to clear this quickly so we don't incur that expense and have to spend the money?
Well, the good thing I can say, Mr. Tominski, is that it is an election year. We have two state representatives and one state senator. And all we can do is ask And all we can do is ask our town elected officials to engage them and to help them help us with this particular problem, because if they give us a double whammy, they not only increased the holdback, but they turned around, they delayed our project a year to slow down our reimbursement, they increased it to 11%, and at the same time, they also took away our ability to hire our own auditors. So, throw all that together, and that's a triple whammy to the town of Ledger. And it's not fair, and we will ask them to deal with that the best that they can. However, Marcia Hancock did make it clear to me that the, those costs would quote have to come out of the project, and good work to the building committee, everyone that's on the line that's been in the committee in the past and today, in that we were good stewards of our money, we didn't just go out and spend what we thought would be surplus, we carefully thought about a lot of things, and luckily, we're in the position that we're in. So, does anybody have any questions about anything we just talked about that they want to bring out before we go any further? I'm sorry, I hit the mute button on as well. So, if nobody else has anything on this, we'll move on to the next item. I just will say that by our next meeting, I should have the updated sheet that Marcia Hancock sent me out to the committee. Our next interest payment is due in June of 2020 on the money we have borrowed, and, you know, one of the things that we're going to have to help Marcia Hancock with is, and I'll need some help from ONG and SPA on this, is going back through our change orders and our project and getting the best possible number that we can get for what we really expect to be our unallowables, worst-case scenario kind of thing, so that we can make sure that we've borrowed the, that we bond the costs for the financing. We can't carry those kinds of costs in the regular town budget, you know, and the good news is that our interest rates are extremely low right now, which is good for the town. Okay, so with that, I'm just going to move on to some items in the agenda, unless anybody has anything else they want to bring up related to the budget or fiscal status of the project.
Just one that, if I can, this is Dan again, to the, what would be the state's determination of the eligibility of the changes that were presented to them. Mike, I don't know if we have received state change order responses, I know that as of the time that I departed last year, or just before that, they hadn't responded to any. Can you update? Do you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, that's, you're correct, Dan, and they still haven't responded to any. I think there's 13 change orders that comprise, you know, a multitude of PCOs that have been written, but until that, until we have some sort of feel for what they deem eligible versus ineligible, I mean, you know, I was thinking when Steve was mentioning this, we could perhaps look at other projects and see the percentages, because, you know, one only knows what, you know, how they're going to operate in this very lean time for the state of Connecticut, you can rest assured that they're not going to be giving money away, so, yeah, it's going to be a best estimate on our part, based on past performance of other schools, but they're not, the audits are going out three, four, or five years now, so, I mean, that's no surprise to anybody. I know it's a surprise to the building committee, but nobody on this side of the business is a surprise to.
Well, Mike, I think it's only a surprise to us, because originally, we were given the bait and switch by the state that, oh, don't worry, after six months, you can hire your own audit, you'll get your money, and we'll reimburse you for the audit. So, the bait and switch was not a good deal, we'll let our elected officials follow up with that, is about the best that we can do.
Yep. Okay, thanks for the update, Mike.
All right, so with that, I'm going to move on, we've got some change orders, and we have some discussion items for tonight as well, and depending on where we are, one of the things we do is, we want to move change orders through the best that we can as fast as we can, because what's really, really important here is that we, and some of the things that are listed as change orders are kind of like bills in this particular case, but in the agenda, but I just want the committee to know that we're trying to get as much stuff as we can be done now during this period of time when we have access to the schools, and, you know, it's hard for the contractors to get new work started, we want to keep money flowing to them, because there's businesses that need to get things going. Thanks to the committee for the special meeting we had a week ago, because we were able to get some payments out to Stone, checks went out the next day, I understand, and they're a small business, they need to pay their people, and things are tough right now. So, with that, the first item on the agenda here that encompasses pages three through 21 of the agenda packet, our change order is change order 100, it is the amount of Now, this is, it's higher than we had originally planned, originally meaning a couple of weeks ago. I just want Steve June to chime in here, the copy I'm looking at has not been signed by SPA. Steve June has the change order for the mag holds or the stairwells at Ledger Middle School been approved by Silver Petrocelli.
I have, Steve, I have one that's been signed by Steve.
Okay.
For the 64,000, yeah, ONG, and Steve signed it on the third.
Okay, not a problem. Okay, with that, then, we'll go ahead and, the change order that's inside your packet is change order request number 100, this is for the Ledger Middle School. Now, if you keep in mind here, this is for the mag holds at the stairwells, the, we're saying labs here, did we wind up putting them into the science rooms as well?
The six laboratories, Steve, correct.
That's, that cost is in the quote.
All right, and also the cafeteria?
Correct.
And this includes everything associated with connecting these things into the fire system, everything except for painting, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and what's the lead time, we think, to get the equipment in and get this installed?
Uh, I don't know, Steve, I've been trying, I've got calls out, I haven't gotten them back, but I'll follow up again tomorrow morning and let everyone know through email. I know, I know the guys, you know, and that's the thing why I wanted to jump on a lot of these things that I sent you today, I want to keep their attention and kind of package all these to get these things moving, but hopefully, this stuff is not a China delivery, I don't think it is, I believe most of this stuff is, you know, still in stock, so to speak, but I don't know that for sure.
All right, and on this particular one, if there is a, I don't know if it all has to be done at one time, but for example, if only some of the material is available, obviously, the stairwells are the priority, because we're having the most problems there with the doors, secondary would be the cafeteria, thirdly, the science lab, so, let's do what we can do here to get this done. The change order is 64,541, it is in order, and I move that we accept and approve the change order.
I got one question, just an open question, on the Dyson Electric invoice, they have, I'm just curious what it is, on their invoice, they have quotes and freight, $10,100. Can somebody explain to me what that is?
Let me get to it, Jerry, hang on.
I'm looking at the change order summary from Dyson Electric.
Yep.
Yep.
Where on the top, it says quote, quotes and freight, $10,100.
Hang on, please, let me get to it.
It's on the agenda, it's, I think it's page 11, or 30, I think it's page 11 of the 31. I'm just curious what it is, that's all, it seems...
I'm pretty sure that's...
Probably the subcontractors.
Wanted to tie.
If you look here, if you keep going back into the proposal, that's from ITS, that's a proposal, that's for all the 22 addressable smoke detectors, the bases, the relays, their programming, et cetera, et cetera.
Is that the material?
Couple pa, a couple, a couple further pages back in the proposal that you were just looking at.
It's page 14 of 31 in the, in the agenda packet, it shows total project cost $10,100, and that includes 22 addressable smoke detectors, 22 bases, 12 doors for the floor, 10 for the wall, 14...
They just, they just have it on the wrong line on the quote, because it looked like it was freight, that's all.
No, 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 no.
Oh, well, that includes the freight on that particular quote.
Right.
It has, but it has the material in it too. That's it, that's the best.
That's different material.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can understand why that'd be confusing, the way they wrote it, Jerry, but that's quotes and freight for things other than their material on 4418, you'll see that if you dig down too.
Yeah, it just looks funny on that particular sheet, that's all.
The way it was written, understand. All right, so, I think the, I made a motion to accept that, did we get a second before Jerry chimed in?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Tominski, do we have any discussion on the change order request number 100? Hearing none, all in favor, please state your name, and I, Steve Jaskiewicz, aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Steve Shutterworth, aye.
Kate Tapalmacher, aye.
And me, aye, Jerry Schneider, aye.
All right, with that, the ayes have it, the change order is approved. The next item is, it says change order number one, but in reality, it's kind of a, it's actually a, well, it is a change order, but it's got an amount attached to it. If you remember, the, the change orders for certain items that went through part two of the project, go back through SPA, this is from Red Thread, which is one of our furniture suppliers, but this is for coral risers, is what the change order is for, the amount of that change order is $14,629.44, and Wayne, if you'll chime in here, we ordered coral risers for the classroom, these are coral risers for the stage, so we don't have to move them back and forth around the building, correct?
Yeah, correct, and the ones in the, that were ordered for the classroom were like larger platform type, where they actually have chairs on them and for instruments and stuff, these are more of a coral riser, three-tier, elevate the different kids above, like you would have for a normal chorus, instead of the full platforms.
All right, so, just to let everybody know, I can tell you right now that this is not going to be state-approved, just to let you know, we already have them in place, correct, Wayne?
No, they haven't come in yet, Amanda did not have the signed approval from you guys.
Sorry, this is the, yeah, this is the change order, this is not the application for payment, so this makes sense. So, with that, just let the committee know, coral risers, and I realize that somebody that are on the line weren't at the state meeting up there, I know that going back, you know, quite a ways back with the state, that coral risers are one of the things that they will not pay for under any circumstances whatsoever. Ledger is a very, very big musical town, and, you know, we were going to have coral risers in our program. I tried to take the H out of coral and call it a science project, that didn't work, so needless to say, I move that we approve change order number one for coral risers in the amount of 14,629.44.
Steve Shutterworth, second.
Seconded by Mr. Shutterworth, is there any discussion on the coral riser change order?
Yeah, Steve, I do, just Pete McIntyre, I did some research, I mean, how many coral risers are we talking about here?
This is one set of coral risers that are ADA compliant and all that kind of stuff, so that when the kids are singing in the chorus, that we can see the short kids in the back, or the kids in the back, rather.
I, well, I would just research on this, and a couple of sites, and you can get a four-tier, super-duper coral riser for less than $2,000.
Looking at the state-approved ones and the ones that are approved for use in schools that meet all the standard requirements for insurability and safety and ADA, I would have a hard time believing we can get one for $2,000, because this is a state-contract type amount of money for these particular coral risers. They're custom-designed for what we need for the number of students.
Are we talking about more than one coral riser, or just one?
Oh, it's a, it's a, it's a, and Wayne, you want to go ahead and explain what it is?
Yeah, it's a, it's a group of them, I'm not exactly sure how many.
The invoice states six.
Yeah, that's what I was...
The invoice said six.
Probably somewhere between five and six.
Okay, that makes sense, then.
Actually, it's 12, because there's, it's got the, if you look at it, there's two different parts to it.
The risers and the stairwells.
Yeah, so, you put all those together, and then there's, there's no freight involved, that's good, but those, just, a single riser is $1,746, so that's probably not too far off of what you came up with, Pete, and this includes delivery and installation.
Okay, you're talking about a magnitude of six or seven, that sounds fine to me.
Okay, no problem. All right, if there's, is there any other discussion on the coral risers? Hearing none, I move, the motion's on the floor, signify your vote by saying your name, and I.
Steve McIntyre, aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Steve Shutterworth, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Kate Tapalmacher, aye.
Jerry Schneider, aye.
Okay, I think we have all the votes, that motion carries. All right, next item we have here is, this is in Salco, and it's showing up as, you've got the, this is change order number two for the Ledger Middle School, it is in the amount of $12,018, this is for additional tack board, bulletin board-type things, and Wayne, did you want to say anything about these, because I think you were the one who asked for them?
Yeah, this was a request from the school for the hallways, they wanted to display more artwork and stuff for the students, middle school has very few, there's a couple in the hallway going down like to the cafeteria area, and the main entrance, other than that, that's about the only place they have to display notices or student work and that type of stuff, they were asking for some additional ones.
Thanks for reminding me on that mute button. So, having heard that, I move that we approve, excuse me, that we authorize application, excuse me, it says application number two, it's actually change order two, to Inselco in the amount of $12,018 per the change order number two. We're not paying the bill, we're actually just approving the change order.
Steve Shutterworth, second to motion.
All right, Steve Shutterworth has seconded that, so with that, is there any discussion on the tack boards? Hearing none, I move that we accept the change order, and signify your vote by saying your name, and I, Steve Jaskiewicz, aye.
Steve Shutterworth, aye.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Jerry Schneider, aye.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I heard Pete, did you vote, Pete?
Pete McIntyre, aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, that change order is accepted. Now, I know we had a lot of emails flying back and forth, and some of those, every once in a while, I forget which ones are for Steve June and which ones are for Steve and which ones are for Steve Jeskowitz, cause they both start with J U. Um, are there any other change orders, uh, this is going to Mike Brennan and Dan, that we need to address tonight, uh, for expediency?
Yeah, Steve, I, um, I sent you a couple different packages. In fact, I sent you three packages today and I thought, at least I'd like to have a discussion about them.
Sure, I got Magholds was one, right?
Package number one. Package number one, or it, it doesn't matter to me, we could start with whichever one is in front of you. You wanna start with the Magholds? Magholds, we've already approved.
Correct.
I sent you, I sent you three other packages this afternoon. Um, package number one was three proposals, and they're electrical proposals from Ferguson Electric. Um, I don't know if you have that in front of you.
Yeah, Lisa, uh, Lisa, I sent something off to you today. Was that one of the ones I sent to you, Lisa?
I think so, and I forwarded it, I was in the vault most of the day. I forwarded, it was probably maybe four fifteen-ish, I forwarded it through regular email to all the members.
Alright, let me take a quick peek at my email. I was tied up in meetings this afternoon as well and, um.
Could get it.
Yeah, I did have you Lisa on it as well.
Okay, this was the curtain, uh, change order.
Oh.
Does that make sense?
Um.
Hang on, Steve, oh.
I'm sorry, light.
There's three packages. Lights, lights.
It was like thirty-something pages.
Yeah, thirty-one pages and this is, uh, the change order.
There's, there's three components of this change order, um, or, excuse me, there's three components of this package one that I sent you, Steve. And let me just get to my, uh, sent box here.
Yeah, it's all in one P, it's all in one P D F, am I correct?
Yes, the one that I forwarded is.
Alright, uh, that's, yeah, that's what I had thought. And that's the one, uh, that I think all the members should have gotten via email of this afternoon.
Yeah, I sent this to you, Steve, at, uh, one fifty-one today, um.
It says number one, it says stage spots and light.
Correct.
For sixteen thousand, that's the first page.
Correct, first, yes.
Yeah, that I did email, through regular email to everyone.
Okay.
Okay, what, what I, what I wanted to, uh, my, my reason for sending these and, um, Steve June has only seen two of, two of the three, um, that, he's, he's weighed in on, excuse me, one of the three. Uh, the reason for me, um, getting these out tonight and try to move the ball forward on, on, on all of these items and, as I mentioned, they, they are already, um, in the cost report, um, and forecasted. Um, these are three things that the, the, uh, school was looking for. Again, one has been reviewed by Steve June, the duplex outlets for the pianos. The first one, the stage spotlight lights and light bar and the backstage, um, stage level lighting has not been reviewed by S P. My thought was, and I, and I wanted to throw it out to the committee, um, these are all by Ferguson Electric. My thought was, with, with this package and one other package that we'll, we'll, we'll talk about later on, I, I wanted to, you know, the, obviously, these things are all priced separately, not knowing which ones are gonna go, you know, and if they're all gonna go, not gonna go, one and three. My thought was, if, if I could get committee's approval for an upset limit here and then negotiate with Ferguson on behalf of the P M B C, a lower number since we're gonna give all three of these to him, if that's the committee's preference, uh, it may, it, it might, um, be who the committee to move forward with these and, and let me beat this guy down where I can. Um, that was my own thought for putting it, putting it out here tonight.
This is the other, Steve. Um, I just sent you over, you and, uh, Steve, comments from our electrical engineer in regards to the, the package of three electrical work.
Okay, alright. Auditorium light bars. Okay.
Alright, Mike, Mike, I just wanna make sure I understand, what you're asking us for, um, tonight is just concurrence that we intend to do the work so you can try to negotiate lower pricing, is that correct?
Yeah, and if I could, again, if I could, i- i- in other words, i- i- if you allow us to and, and with Steve June's ultimate approval or Silver Petricelli's ultimate approval, this is, this is the worst-case scenario. I don't plan on, on, you know, going forward with the worst-case scenario, cause my, again, these things are all priced individually. If I go back to Ferguson and say, hey, guys, not for nothing, but there's three items of work, you know, you could package them all together, hit them all done in, you know, um, concurrently with a crew, you know, you stand to make, uh, you know, a little bit of money here. Let's not be, uh, overly, overly zealous, so to speak, you know what I'm saying?
Alright, so the same guys that come out to put in the piano, uh, electrical outlets are gonna do the, the lighting and we get, um, you know, the, the number of foreman hours and everything and, and for them to bring, you know, to get to the site, set up and everything is less. Um, understand that, uh, understand that. Now, Steve June, your concerns on this, uh, just in pricing?
Yes. I don't know if you saw the email that I just sent you, Steve, in regards to the electrical engineers.
I just got that in, uh, you sent it during the meeting, correct?
Correct, yeah, about a couple minutes ago.
You wanna, uh, you wanna go ahead and just give an overview of that, uh, email to the committee on, it's on the phone?
Yes, uh, let me grab it up. In regards to the auditorium light bars, uh, our electrical engineer feels that the amount of conduit and wires seems legitimate, uh, a little bit high, but not too much, so he's fine with that. Uh, still in the auditorium light bars, testing and commissioning is listed for two hours, which seems high for testing the two bars. Uh, the quantities of material, the quantity of hours, just under sixty, seems high, so he's concerned about the hours.
The hours, hours equate to cost.
Yeah. Regards to the second, uh, electrical item, which is the chorus room piano power. Uh, he sees the, uh, the molding is a little excessive. The amount of, uh, hangers and couplings and field bends is high for one circuit. Uh, the amount of labor seems excessive for one circuit to go across the hallway to the boiler room. And also, just under eight hours for termination of number twelve wire seems high. So, it's, yeah, some concerns. The last one is for the auditorium blue lights. He's got one point six five hours for installation of blue lights. Yeah, I think he means a hundred and sixty-five hours for installation of blue lights is excessive. It's not like they need a lift to install these fixtures. Labor should be much less.
Yeah, I think that is kinda, a hundred and sixty hours, that's, that's a full-time guy for a month.
No, no, it's, it's, it's one point six five hours, one point six five hours per blue light.
So, you're saying about two hour, two hours, okay, two, about two hours for blue lights.
Okay, okay.
One, yeah, one and a half hours per light installation, you know.
Alright, alright, so, so with that, make sure I understand you correctly. Obviously, there's some issues that Silver Petricelli's issues that O N G needs to bring back to the electrical, uh, Ferguson on this. Um, and what I would ask then is, um, so Mike, what you want is consensus from the committee that we're going to do the work, uh, but, uh, assuming that you can negotiate the pricing down, correct?
Correct, Steve. Yeah, a- again, it's an opportunity to me to, you know what? Cause I gotta believe, and I, I, I know it for a fact, that, you know, a lot of their work is starting to slow because of this COVID, which means they're probably gonna be looking for a place to put a guy or two. So, I think it may hit, at least my thinking is, I think it may hit well to, uh,
Okay.
Put a couple guys on this type of thing and, I'm sorry.
Obviously, uh, obviously do what you can to reduce the cost, some of it, and especially hitting the points that Silver Petricelli brought out, so it just doesn't sound like we're whining about it. Obviously, the blue lights have to be done, cause that's a safety issue. Uh, for the committee and for some of you that joined the committee or were not on the committee, when we had the discussion with the drama department, uh, they came out and gave a presentation to the committee and they asked specifically for some additional lighting and things. Uh, and also, some of the lighting is actually safety lighting, because with the added curtains, there's some areas that don't have lighted, lighting and it is dark back there. So, we're, uh, putting some, uh, low lighting in there to, um, ensure that nobody gets hurt. So, there is a safety component to this. So, what I'd like to do is, is, uh, post, uh, I'd just like to get anyone in the committee that has any issues, uh, I'd like to just give direction, uh, at this point for, uh, Mike to, uh, Mike Brennan to go out and, uh, negotiate lower costs for this, uh, and, uh, with our intention to do the work. Does anyone have any, uh, issues on that?
Steve Shuttleworth, no.
Jerry, no. Uh, Jerry Tominski, no.
Kate Tapalmaher, no issues.
Pete McIntyre, no.
Alright, and Steve Jeskowitz here, I have no issues. So, uh, Mike, go ahead and get us a better price on that and, uh, let's see if we can get that work done and close that out. Uh, other items that showed up, um, kinda, kinda today kinda things, um, we have been talking about the safe room for quite a bit and, uh, if you remember correctly, that we had problems with, um, how we got to the safe room, uh, issue where, uh, you know, slight change in program that wasn't well conveyed to us, but lead us to say, we wanna give the school the facility they need to do their job. Um, we had originally, uh, looked at about a seventy-five thousand dollar, uh, cost on that. I think the cost projection, uh, may I have that backwards? I think, uh,
You're backwards, Steve, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little lower than the original cost, um, and the, uh, what stage are we at on this one right now, Mike? What do you, uh, need from us tonight?
I, well, again, Steve, Steve June has not seen this, again, just to give him, you know, the courtesy. Uh, but, again, um, I wanted to put this thing out there, um, it, it should come in a little bit lower, because the paintings, I, Steve and I were talking about it. I looked at this over the weekend, the painting didn't make sense to me. So, the painting proposal is high, because it was based on the original sculptural work and not the revised. Um, that's my guess anyway, and I, I'm pretty confident in that guess. Um, so, again, it, my, my point is, if, if upon approval from S, I'd like to get the P M B C's approval, conditional upon S A P's approval, so I could get this work moving as well.
Alright, so, and, and in this particular case, everybody knows that this has been one that the school is really pushing for. Um, right now, the estimate is lower than the original, uh, uh, cost that was given to us by O N G. So, I'd like to do is to, again, get consensus, the committee to be able to, uh, get this work moving, uh, and, uh, that will, uh, you know, based on approval of, uh, Silver Petricelli of the change order, begin to order the parts and things that need, uh, a little bit of a lead time. So, uh, so with that, again, consensus of the committee, if you have any issues with, uh, getting the parts on order and moving this in the direction, uh, to get it done, uh, I think this is, uh, we, you know, we need to continue to try to get the cost down on that, but, uh, I'd like to do the same thing with this to keep things moving. So, does, does anyone have any issues, uh, with that approach for the safe room at Galapelle?
Steve Shuttleworth, no issue.
Pete McIntyre, no issue.
Jerry Tominski, no issue.
Jerry Schneider, no issue.
Kate Tapalmaher, no issue.
Okay, with that, I have no issue, oh, sorry, Pete, um, with that, I have no issues, so, uh, you have your direction, Mike, uh, let's go get this done, um, and we'll, uh, hopefully have something to vote on in our next meeting.
Okay.
The third item was, uh, on the handicap doors at the main entrance for the two schools. Uh, we, uh, uh, just today, uh, in the afternoon, about three o'clock in the afternoon, uh, we were able to get, um, uh, I'm just reading through here, uh, we've got, uh, a couple of packages being moved for that. Uh, Mike, what do you need us to do on these tonight or any, they're still at S P A for approval. The, the dollar figures we're looking at here are in the thirty thousand dollar range for Gallup and about thirty-two thousand for L M S. Um, and, uh, I, I presume the cost difference has to do with how far the runs are to the, uh, power source and stuff?
Yeah, there was a little more work at, at L M S to get, to get to where we needed to get to. Um, again, as I, as I noted, um, there, there's, there's some, um, there's some minor ceiling work that needs to be done at Galapelle. I didn't include it, but I'm really confident that I, I could get that ceiling work done by, uh, ton acoustics. Um, you know, at the same time, they're doing some other work down there, so minor work, but nonetheless, it's a little bit of savings. Um,
Right, is this another one that we can couple with Ferguson, uh, to try to get the costs on all of them down?
Exactly, Steve, that's, and that's why I wanted to do, this will make five, five fairly large items that, you know, Ferguson is gonna have now, that I believe there's some savings to be had here. And I want the opportunity to, you know, take them, take them to the shed a little bit on these things, though.
But we'll also save money on the O N G, uh, superintendent, uh, superintendent costs, because, uh, if it's all at the same time, when you guys add some time in there, we should see less there, right?
Yeah, I, I, I could go back and look at that, Steve, as well, sure.
Yeah, that makes sense, cause I'd like to get all this work done at the same time. It's also easier for Wayne to, uh, you know, only have to be in that building, uh, you know, a little bit less time. He can be in the other buildings that need his time and attention. Uh, so with, with that, um, you know, our intention is that we already approved at a previous meeting to, uh, to do the, uh, handicap, uh, doors. We, we already approved that, so with that, continue to negotiate, get us the best price that you can. Um, and we're getting an idea of the long lead time for this stuff, but, uh, dump all that together and see what you can get out of Ferguson.
Okay, will do, good, thank you.
Alright, uh, are there any other change orders or items that are out there, uh, that either Dan, Mike, or Steve June know that we need to give you direction or take any action on this evening?
Uh, I'll jump in there just to, uh, not a, a need for an action, but I did, did follow up with four change order requests. Those are the formal documents to, uh, to close out four of our trade contracts for, uh, for their trade contract allowances. If you'd like to make motion on them, I did send them, so they're available to you, or I can read off the information. Essentially, these trade contract allowances, um, in some cases add five, eight thousand dollars to a contract and in some cases return, uh, the same or more.
Yeah, Dan, uh, in order, since there's no time expediency on that, other than, you know, to get them closed out, let's go ahead and get those forwarded to Lisa and we'll put those into our next meeting, which is, uh, two weeks from today. Um, and then we'll get them closed out. Uh, it's not gonna extend how much longer the project takes or anything, so I think that, uh, is the best course of action there.
Understood, agreed.
Alright, uh, so with that, is there anything else that we need to cover before I move on to the track and field? Uh, Wayne, anyone got anything?
No, I don't have anything, Mike.
Alright, how's that snow removal equipment working this year?
Storm we had, it worked pretty good.
You know, and the, if I can, I'll, I'll take the floor for one more item. Uh, and that is, we did get, um, you know, rough order magnitude pricing to construct the front, um, stone monument out at Ledgerd Middle School. The cost information was forwarded over to Steve June. Just getting a feel for the, for the, for the, so to speak, it's about a fifteen thousand dollar. Is that something we should continue to pursue?
Uh, let me go back and take a look at the, the numbers and get them in front of the committee before we do that. Right now, we have a, just a concrete pad there, right? Correct. And that is not a lit monument, correct?
Correct.
Alright, uh, cause, uh, we'll, we'll discuss that at our next meeting if that works. Uh, do you have, you have drawings for that, right?
Uh, yes, we have drawings and, uh, and first running pricing, so we will, uh, continue to, to get best pricing and bring it forward.
Roger that, uh, okay, so, uh, with that, I'm gonna move on to, um, and, uh, anyone else that, uh, wants to stay on the line, feel free, uh, but as far as, I realize you guys don't have to drive back. Um, so, we're, we're saving a lot of money on Silver Petricelli's, um, uh, mileage and stuff, if anything else. So, uh, we're at Roman numeral number eight, which is discussion, possible action on Legerd High School Track and Field Project. So, before we pay Castle Booze's bill, um, Wayne, would you wanna give us an update on that project, see how things are going?
Sure, gladly.
We'll be, uh, cutting out, thank you, this is Dan Hessler.
All right, thanks, guys.
I'll be cutting out as well, thank you.
Yes, this is Steve, I'll be out.
Thanks. All right, all right, go ahead, Wayne.
Sound it a nitty gritty. Um, okay, yeah, things are moving along very well, most of the drainage is in, um, well ahead of schedule. Uh, I did talk to, uh, H and I Stone this afternoon, they didn't call me, they have, uh, he, tentative pricing, very tentative. Um, on the water line was, there's, he was sent two proposals, one was, uh, I believe, a one-inch line coming up, which exists, um, and the tap-offs that are needed, um, and he said that estimate right now was about twenty-seven, he was waiting on some final figures. Um, the secondary one, which was the B, which-
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven hundred or twenty-seven K?
Twenty-seven thousand. Um, and then he was looking, I believe, the second, the B choice was around a two-inch line up there, which I talked to Eric, is not necessary, and that was around fifty. Um, now, I did talk to Eric, and Eric suggested that, um, the, um, maintenance staff pulled the wiring in for the, for the outlets that are needed for the, uh, field, and there's an allotment in the contract of about forty or forty-five thousand dollars, um, to do that work. Um, we can do it very easily, that's not an issue, um, it's in, uh, Stone's contract to put the piping and all in, so we would just pull the wiring in, the existing piping, once they put it in. Um, so we do have that option to offset some of that cost.
And that would be with your staff, right?
That would be with my, my staff, yes.
Yeah, I'm figuring they have a little bit more time than they normally have right now with less kids in the school, so hopefully that'll be, um, something we can get done that way.
Yeah, so we, by the next meeting, we should have some more permanent, uh, uh, definite figure on the, on the cost.
Okay. Anything else on the, uh, on the, uh, track and field?
No, everything's moving along, like I said, they're well ahead of schedule, um, they actually, I, I don't know what their schedule is, but they should be talking about paving very shortly.
All right, got that. All right, so with that, we have one bill to pay, which is a Castle Booze bill, uh, which is attached to your agenda, this is Castle Booze invoice one nine zero one six point zero zero five, Leger High School Track, uh, what they're billing us for, uh, this particular, um, month is two thousand dollars of construction administration, which makes sense, cause that's the ongoing part of the project, uh, so with that, I move that we approve the Castle Booze invoice for two thousand dollars.
Steve Shuttlerworth, second.
Hey, it's seconded by Mr. Shuttlerworth, uh, any discussion on the invoice? Hearing none, uh, I, uh, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Steve Shuttlerworth, aye.
Yeah, Jerry Tominski, aye.
Steve McIntyre, aye.
Kate Tappamaher, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
All right, I think that's everybody, so with that, the, uh, invoice is, uh, approved. All right, uh, we really have nothing to discuss on the asbestos project at this point, uh, so with that, is there any other business that needs to be brought before the committee?
Mike, Steve, just an update on the asbestos. Um, I did talk to the state, or had an email conversation with Michelle Dixon up there, um, and she was looking into what we had to do, to see if the, uh, we could increase the state's, um, allotment for that project.
Okay, is that, uh, all right, Steve, when do you think you'll hear something more on that?
I was hoping to have it, um, before this meeting, but, um, I'm hoping before the end of the week, and I'll send that information out to you. Either way, we've still got to, uh, if we're gonna move forward with the project, we've still gotta go back to the town, because they're gonna want town approval on an increase. Uh, if they agreed up there, you know, we're still gonna be held to the sixty-something percent that the state would pay.
Roger, so if you would send me a summary, uh, invoice, uh, of that, of the costs and the projections on that, um, and get that back to me, and I'll put something in front of the, uh, chairman of the town council.
Okay, I'll get, have that for you first thing this morning. I think I sent you out the figures anyway already, but I'll, I'll redo them in a more formal format and send them out to you in the morning.
We'll put a comment, yeah, put something in there about your conversation with Michelle Dixon from the state.
That's fine, that's fine.
All right, so with that, is there anything else for our meeting tonight? Okay, hearing none, our next meeting is in two weeks, I expect that that will still be a remote virtual meeting, um, and I appreciate your time today, and, uh, have a good night. Move we adjourn.
Steve Shuttlerworth, bye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it, we're adjourned.
Aye.
Well, that's it.
I think if you go to that site on that thing.
Yeah.
You can also see that, see something.
Can't go, I asked Stephen, you said Stephen's seen.
Well, because of what, what somebody said there, it sounded to me like you could, but, okay.